Good evening. Today is Monday, March 11th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Welcome to our meeting. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we drive into the agenda tonight, I did actually have two agenda items that I'd like to add with support of the board. The first is to add an agenda item. I'm going to suggest it would be 9.8, to act on the budget reduction from the Board of Finance. Is there a motion to add 9.8 act on budget reduction from Board of Finance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second item I'd like to add, again with the support of the board, is a brief executive session to occur after item 12, but before adjournment of the entire meeting. This executive session would be to briefly discuss pending litigation. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. So 3.1 is to act on meeting minutes from February 12, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments or corrections to those February 12, 2024 meeting minutes? Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I'm also missing one. Okay. I'm going to let's do that.
I was going to bring that up. We have minutes from the 5th, and I'm not sure if we need to.
We need to. We need to. We need to add that as an agenda item, too.
Yeah.
So let's. Sorry. I've started us on February 12. Let's start on the February 12 minutes.
You need to add an action item.
Okay. We don't have no motion on the table? Okay. So let's start within the following motion. We are noting that we have in our board packet a set of meeting minutes for February 5, 2024, which is not currently listed on the agenda. So I am going to ask for a motion to add, I'm going to call it 3.3, action on minutes for February 5, 2024.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's not a vote on the minutes. It's simply to vote on them when we get there. So, okay. February 12 minutes, agenda item 3.1. Is there a motion to approve the February 12, 2024 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any corrections, comments, questions about these minutes? Hearing none. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the Monday, February 12, 2024 meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? That's everyone. Okay. February 26, 2024, Board of Education meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, comments, questions about these minutes? All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's everybody. All right. And was everybody at that meeting? If you were not at that meeting, I'm going to ask you to abstain.
Jen, you had stepped out. You needed to step away.
Oh, that was the one.
Yes. I'm sorry. I wasn't. I was not.
Okay. So, so sorry. We have a vote for the February 26, 2024 meeting minutes. Approving those minutes, Katie Ballastraci, John Delventura, Dick Hirsch, Kristen Peck, Arnold Skretta, and then two abstentions, Jennifer Baldwin and Moira Rader. All right. And now the 3.3 that we added, approval of the February 5, 2024 Board of Education special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I had three corrections, requested corrections to these minutes on page one. Under number two, the very last sentence of the first paragraph. The board understands that the responsibility in the development of the annual budget is to put forth a budget that supports and maintains the academic excellence of Guilford Public Schools and is also financially responsible. And I'm asking to strike and will receive taxpayer support to be replaced by to the taxpayers who support the school district. Did we receive these minutes? I don't see them in the packet. February 5?
They are at the back of all the other minutes. It looks like there may have been a duplicate of the 12th.
The 12th.
And then these appear at the end of the second set.
A little confusing. And then on page two, third paragraph down, Dr. La. Dr. I can't even say my own name. Isn't that great? Dr. Ballastraci noted that. I wanted to strike and the 2.5 para position. So this, I was talking about a discussion that we had had in the special meeting the previous week and at caucus sessions, and the para positions were not part of those discussions. So it would read that board members had discussed the additional safety monitors, the drama teacher at Adams, and the classroom teacher at Lead. And then on page three, first paragraph where it says Mr. Delventura, the second sentence is talking about the current two safety monitors. It should say six. The current six safety monitor positions are funded by ARPA funds. And then the next sentence, following discussion, it was agreed that, and I say strike the current, it should read, two of the six safety monitor positions currently funded by ARPA remain in the proposed budget. Are there other proposed corrections or comments to these minutes? All right. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's everyone. Thank you. All right. We are up to number four on the agenda, which is public comments for topics on the agenda. Would anyone like to address the board on topics on the agenda? All right. Hearing none. I'm going to turn it to Mrs. Baldwin for review and approval of the expenditures for the month of February.
Thank you very much. The expenditures for the month of February This represents 61.39% of the budget as compared to 62.1% the previous year. Revenue was $655,341.80. This is broken down by excess cost of $622,572, non-resident tuition of $317.80, pre-K tuition $25,952, and tuition from Clinton of $6,500. The excess cost does represent a 68.1% reimbursement rate, and that was split into two separate lines. $462,227.27 to the tuition line and $160,371.73 to the special education buses line. Salaries approximate last year. We have invoiced the town for the salaries for the safety monitors and nurses aides. That should be coming, hopefully due and payable pretty soon. Tuition is currently expended lower than the prior year. Capital is, the percentage of the budget expended is lower than the prior year due to reimbursement on a capital lease. And transportation approximates the amount of the prior year. Other than that, there wasn't much to talk about. The only big thing we talked about was electricity. That is always increasing as it is for all of us. But additionally, there was an error in that line where there was a double payment made regards to four of the schools. So that will get a credit, and that will balance itself out going forward. Other than that, that was really the only highlight of that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We did talk about this in some detail in the Board of Ed Operations Committee meeting just prior to this meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is everybody. Thank you. Number six, communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications to share that they received?
No. No. Quiet.
Yep.
Quiet.
Yes. My quiet.
All right. Student reps, welcome.
Hi there.
How are you? It is time for your report.
Wonderful. Starting off with Adams, there is a student volleyball tournament that happened as part of the Iron Giraffe fundraiser for raising water for money. For raising money for water, not water for money. In South Sudan. And it was a success. There were 11 teams total of students that played in the tournament. That was over 80 students total. And there was four, and they raised $400. Spring sports are also starting soon at Adams, and they're having informational meetings this week and next week. Adams will host author John David Anderson for an author's visit on Wednesday, 13th. And over 19 Adams students total in the band orchestra and chorus there participated in the CMEA Regional Festival over the weekend. And they also have an upcoming field trip to Mystic Seaport that they're all very excited about. Melissa Jones, this past month, the kindergartners at Melissa Jones hosted a weather expo for family and friends to see the work they have done with their weather unit. Students performed weather-related songs, presented video weather forecasts, and demonstrated knowledge of weather basics. The MJS third graders hosted a Freaky Frog Festival where they invited parents to view their work on books they created about frogs, as well as Freaky Frog trading cards. I'm assuming it's some sort of the red-blooded jungle frogs and whatnot. This past month, Melissa Jones also hosted a family fitness night where students and their families participated in a host of physical activities that highlighted fitness and raised funds for the school as well. And their school store has reopened, and it's available for all students once per month during lunchtime. And students and teachers celebrated the Read Across America Week with activities like dressing like your favorite book character, older students reading to younger students, and hosting guest readers and sharing a love for books. And at Calum Lee, students wrapped up their ninja training unit in Mr. Prescott's physical education classes. They were focusing on rolling, bouncing, climbing, and jumping. I don't know if I could have done that. Apparatuses such as rings, risers, and a climbing wall were used to challenge and motivate students. An animal expert from the Dennison Pequot Suppose Nature Center visited kindergartners as part of their study of animals and trees. Kindergartners had been learning about animals and how they depend on trees for survival. Students excitedly observed and interacted with the animals. And recently, Mrs. Carney conducted a mix-it-up day at lunch as part of the kindness initiative. Mix-it-up at lunch challenges students to get out of their comfort zone and engage with others. Students were randomly assigned to a table by receiving a color card as they entered the cafe. And students were given conversation starters and/or would-you-rather questions to foster the discussion of their thoughts and opinions. They were encouraged to learn something new about someone else and expand their social circles. Additionally, the PTO held a learning fair last week. Over 100 students created projects at home about personal interests. Thank you to Deirdre and Connor Dolan for organizing this wonderful event. Students enjoy spending time working on topics that really mattered to them, whether that was fun facts on Arctic foxes, overviews of French cuisine, or the anatomy of a PC computer.
Okay. So then at Guilford Lakes, the first graders shared their poetry about the sun, moon, and stars with their third-grade buddies. And then the third graders shared their writing back with them about their frog unit. Then after learning about Humpty Dumpty, preschoolers did a science project where they tried to test different materials that would help prevent an egg from cracking when it was dropped. And I'm pretty sure the high school kids, the physics classes, just said that a couple of weeks ago.
Nothing like alignment of lessons. We were talking about vertical.
March 7, the first and second graders had their music concert. The first graders also participated in an in-house field trip where educators from Mystic Seaport came and talked to them about, or talked to them and worked with them doing activities related to day and night, rotation and revolution, and the seasons. They also, they also held a meet and greet with new families on March 1st. So the PTO and Principal Ryan met with new families in the staff lounge at school for coffee, tea, and hot cocoa. They also had their 100th day of school celebration. I guess that would have been a couple of weeks ago. The students also made creative Valentines in art classes, which were then collected and delivered to the community center for their senior luncheon. And they're currently holding a pet supply drive for the Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter. And then at AW Cox, they've been working on celebrating belonging. So the students and staff created a paper chain with examples of how to make others feel like they belong, and they wrote different things on each chain, which represented their connectedness. So that chain now hangs in the cafeteria as a reminder of their strong learning community. And then last week, they celebrated Read Across America Week. So the students and staff dressed as their favorite character. The students met with their book buddies, and they found ways to read independently, like reading in the dark and then with a flashlight. And they all found, or they all completed a school-wide challenge to try and do that. It was students and teachers read 50 books each, which represented one of the 50 United States. So they truly did Read Across America. They also had an engaging STEAM museum come to Cox that allowed students to explore hands-on science, art, and movement activities. So they built, but they built a bridge using a microscope and created art using energy produced from a bicycle. So they had lots of fun with that. And last week, they met with Steve Song, with Steve's songs, and engaged in singing and interactive music activities. So they were able to connect with fun music with their school focus of belonging and kindness. And then at Baldwin, on February 14, the sixth-grade band participated in the district-wide band jamboree. So that was sixth grade, eighth grade, and the wind ensemble at the high school. So that was a fantastic event that showcased the performance, the performance music program, grades six through 12. And then winter, springs, winter, spring after-school clubs have started. So they have strong enrollment in all of the clubs with hiking club, footsle club, footsle makers' club, and lots and lots of students are really having fun starting up these activities. And this Wednesday, March 13, their Community Builders Club will be hosting an all-school assembly with a focus on gratitude. So the assembly is both planned, organized, and run by students. And it is their second all-school assembly designed to support their theme of belonging. Then after the assembly, the students are going to participate in related activities in each of their, or in each of their classrooms. And then also, over the last month or so, Baldwin's been contacted by two different school districts in Connecticut who are interested in learning more about Baldwin's instructional schedule. So they've participated in telephone meetings with one district, and they're going to be hosting representatives from a neighboring district for an in-person visit later this week. So it's really flattering to have other schools around the state look at us as an exemplar of effective scheduling at the grades five through six level. And then at the high school, Tech Week has been going on. So I just came from rehearsal. I'll be going back to rehearsal. So that's this week, and the show is this upcoming weekend and the following. And so all the, all the shows are sold out, which is the first time they've ever all been sold out before, before the first weekend. So that's very, very exciting. There's a lot of students that are excited by that. A bunch of students took the SATs here at the high school this past weekend. Spring sports are beginning. I think this week at the high school, parent-teacher conferences. So there's half-days for the students. That's always, that always puts people in a good mood. Rec volleyball has started, which followed the end of rec basketball. And what else?
Usually when we hear the noises around the high school at these meetings, as the, either the rec basketball or the rec volleyball, but this time around, it is the.
The musical, right? They're practicing.
We also have, speaking of the musical noises, we have upcoming concerts around the school. We have an upcoming concert at Woolsey Hall at Yale on the 21st of March, featuring a variety of select groups. The String Festival for the Orchestra grades five through 12 is also upcoming on the March 26th, I believe it is. And then, yeah. The National Honor Society Carnation Sale went very well. We sold about 1,500 of the flowers total to students around the school, and we donated the proceeds to charity. And the math team got the first place in our region this year. We got stuck in last year. So it was fun to beat Xavier this time around. We won four out of the six meets total, and we're going to states with high hopes this year.
It's great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
I'm interested in the Baldwin's schedule, right? So we heard, we know obviously a lot about it and that there are a lot of changes that Mr. Hamel shepherded through. Are there particular things that are gaining interest? Is it the?
We happen to have Mr. Hamel.
I know. Poor Mr. Hamel.
Do you want to come up and mention what?
So sorry. I'm just interested. I mean, I can make guesses, but it would be great to hear what's catching people's attention or other district's attention.
Yeah. I actually stepped out for the report, but I know what it says, so. Thank you, guys. Yeah. We got, we got a couple of calls. It's mostly schools are going from a traditional schedule to more of a block-type schedule. So the things we did maybe seven or eight years ago at Baldwin, people just, they asked for recommendations of schools that have schedules they think are student-centered. And our name tends to come up. This is probably the, you know, third or fourth year in a row we've had, we're having visits, and we're having one the end of this week. So the question that they're really asking is what do you got to do to prepare a staff for that? What PDs needed? When you're going from a 42-minute period to a 65-minute period, you know, what kind of support will they need? So that's what they're coming to see and talk about. Yeah. It'd be fun.
Great.
We love hosting, so.
Yeah. No, it's wonderful.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions for our fabulous student reps here? How are you guys doing? Things going well?
The musical is fun. I mean, I just came. They just put the mics on all the, all the singers for the first time today so you can actually hear them.
Wow.
It's a lot, it's a lot of fun to sit in and listen.
And you've been doing tech?
I've been in the pit, so.
Oh, excellent. Can you share the name of the pit orchestra?
Yes. We are Blonde Jovi.
I love it. I like it.
Is there any other way? Tickets? Or like if we come to the door, like my daughter, I have two tickets, and I think she's trying to steal mine. So I'm trying to get two more. And I just looked online today to see that they were completely sold out for every show. So it, like, will tickets be available if people don't show up? Or any idea how that happens?
I think some people, I think that, I believe it's, I think it says online somewhere, but I think it's the morning of the show. I think the, like, the site will be, like, reloaded with anyone who's decided to give up their seats. And then on the, like, if you actually walk into the show and people have decided to give up their seats even more last minute, give up their seats even more last minute, then it'll be like a first-come, first-served sort of thing. I think they do that an hour before, but I could be wrong. It says somewhere online, I think if, on the GHSCA Instagram, I think it says.
They're not available on Ticket Hub.
The subtext to that question was, do the student representatives to the Board of Education have extra tickets?
See us after the meeting.
No. Well, it's so great. I mean, it's so.
That's fantastic that it's sold out this far in advance. That's really.
Glad I have my tickets.
Very excited.
I just, like, I wasn't allowed to see anything and I just ran downstairs like two minutes and I saw like two minutes of a scene. And they have live dogs. They have a bruiser and they have, what's the other dog's name? I can't.
Bruiser and, um, it's.
Paulette's dog.
Paulette's dog, yeah.
I can't remember, but there's, yeah, so it's.
So a lot of high schools do not do two weekends of a spring musical and to be sold out for two weekends, it really is a testament to the professionalism and the quality of the program here.
Guys are working so hard.
And our student performers.
Absolutely.
It's a lot of fun.
Awesome.
Good for you.
Well, thank you.
Good job.
Once again, for this great report. I know, that is good. And welcome to stay and we also understand if you need to go. And it sounds like you actually have, you may have a job waiting for you at this moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Freeman, turning it to you.
Thank you, and I have a relatively brief report tonight, but I do want to update the board and the community on the process and the developments around the search for the new principal at Melissa Jones. And so our posting for this position closed about a week ago and we ended up with over 50 completed and qualified applications. We drew candidates from Connecticut to California who applied for this principal opening. I was concerned about what kind of response we would get. I know I have spoken a lot to this board during the budget process about the educator shortage. I was worried about this pool and I am thrilled at the depth and the quality of the candidates. Mr. Bowden and I have been actively screening those candidates as they have come in. We've got some really exciting, enormously qualified candidates. Mr. Bowden and I have met probably about 25 of those candidates as part of that screening process as we have moved forward. Last week, I met with the faculty and staff at Jones Elementary School to ask them about the experiences, the skills and the dispositions that they will be looking for in their next principal to come on board. I want to note that on the 13th of this week, I'll be meeting with the parents at Jones. That is scheduled through Zoom link. So at 6:00 PM is the 13th Wednesday, on Wednesday evening, I'll be meeting with parents at Jones. So if that, if the parents didn't receive that link, they can contact my office or look on the website to access that Zoom link. And the conversation with the parent community will be the same. What are the, what are the experiences? What are the skills? And what are the dispositions that we will be looking for in our next principal? Later in the month, we will be winnowing that pool down to probably somewhere between six and eight candidates who will come in and sit for a formal representative committee interview. Mr. Dell Ventura will be joining us on that interview committee as the board rep. We'll have teachers, parents, central office staff and another elementary principal joining us. Soon after that, we will invite finalists back for what we refer to as a performance interview. If necessary, we will be conducting site visits as well as reference checks. And we hope to have a candidate to you, if not by your first, then by your second meeting in April, to, to meet and hopefully approve a candidate for the principalship. Our goal is that that person will be available to begin with us, if not July 1st at least during the month of July, and have a lot of summer time to settle in. Really excited about the quality of the pool, looking forward for this search to be started in earnest and really, really appreciative to Mr. Regan, who has come out of retirement to join us as an interim principal at Jones, is doing a wonderful job, handled the power outage that we had at Jones today. And it's just exciting to have Mr. Regan back and help, having him be part of the team as we go through this process.
Excellent. Having had the opportunity to sit on a number of searches, I think I've mentioned this before, I really love being part of that process. It's such a great process. You do a very thorough, a very thorough job.
It's a really important piece of our work and I thoroughly enjoy. And again, I'm really excited about, about the quality of the candidates we have to consider moving forward. It's all good news.
Excellent, and thank you for.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Excellent.
The other good news is that that concludes my report this evening.
All right, so then we'll go on to, to the board agenda. 9.1 is to act on personnel items, so we have three resignations to act on. We've been asked to ratify the resignation of the following teachers. Jennifer Landry, Guilford High School, Special Education, six years of experience, effective December 11th, 2023. Elizabeth Stefanowski, Jones Elementary School, Grade II, one to two years experience, effective date March 6th, 2024. And Alex Lipka, Guilford Lakes Elementary, Special Ed, effective date February 23rd, 2024. Is there a motion to ratify the resignation of the, these three teachers? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dr. Freeman, I imagine we have various principals working to replace or directors of Special Ed working to replace these folks, because these are all mid-year.
Yes, both. We have principals and Mr. Scanziano who are working collaboratively to fill first with subs, then with long-term subs, and if possible, with permanent replacements. And some of these positions, we will choose to fill with a, a long-term sub through the end of the year. Hiring this late in the year often impacts the pool, so hiring for a, finding a substitute, an interim person to then hire a permanent position to begin next September is often the, the greater opportunity. But yes, we are working to close these positions.
Okay, thank you. Number 9.2, we have actually, 9.2, 3, and 4 are textbook recommendations. These were recommendations that were brought to the board last month at our meeting and we are being asked tonight to act on these recommendations. So the first is a textbook recommendation for Marine Biology, 12th Edition. Again, we have been given several pages of information on the book, on the reasons for the choice, on other textbooks that had been considered, and on pricing to meet the request. I think this was the course we were so excited about hearing about last month, too.
I would just remind the board and the community that at the last meeting, Ms. Chaff and Mr. McDowell and Dr. Goss spoke at some length about the courses and the book selections and it was a, a really helpful conversation. I, I wouldn't want somebody watching tonight's meeting to think that this is the entirety of the conversation about these texts or this opportunity.
And I, and I want to note, as happens every time, the books were brought to the meeting last month and then also have been available at the Board of Ed offices at Lathrop House all month for anyone to review. So we've been asked again to approve this textbook recommendation and purchase. Is there a motion to do so?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous, thank you. The second textbook recommendation is for a purchase of Experience Physics. This also is a book that was brought to us last month, also available in Lathrop House for review if anyone's interested. Is there a motion to approve this textbook?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions, follow-up? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous, thank you. And then the third is to act on textbook recommendation, AP Edition, College Physics, A Strategic Approach, 4th Edition. Is there a motion to approve this textbook?
So moved.
Any comments, questions, concerns? No, all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. That's everyone. Okay, wonderful, thank you. 9.5 is to approve a donation to Melissa Jones School for a Gaga Ball pit. I know.
It's as much fun as it sounds.
My kids are now college and post, but Gaga Ball at camp was a huge, huge thing.
What's Gaga Ball?
It's like little, like, two-foot walls and like you kind of go inside the pit.
And like a round, right, round?
Yeah.
Round.
And it's like, kind of like kickball within like this very confined. It's fun, kids love it. Camp is like where my kids learned how to play, yeah.
Exactly.
There is one at the new playground renovations at Lakes. It was part of the new redesign and so this would be.
I feel like Jacobs Beach House, one of the sun, too.
I'm sure.
There you go. I know, it does, it does. I know, it does. So again, this is, this is a donation to Melissa Jones Elementary School to accept in the amount of $2,520, a Gaga Ball pit.
This is from the PTO.
From the PTO and very much appreciated.
Thank you, from the Melissa Jones PTO.
So how big is a Gaga Ball pit? Like, is it like the size of this space?
It's not quite as big as the central space.
But you kick a ball around.
Yes.
You move it with your hands.
I have two kids, how do I?
You move it with your hands. It's not soccer.
We will stage a Board of Ed.
Oh, I like that, next to street.
To Melissa Jones Elementary School.
Arnold is showing you the technique. Right under the table.
Yes.
Little demonstration.
We'll have a demonstration.
I like it.
Is there a motion to approve the donation from the Melissa Jones PTO?
So moved.
You're when you're lower to the ground.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent, that is unanimous as well. 9.6 is to receive recommendations from the Policy Committee.
Yes, we have a couple tonight. The first one is the Policy 5118 and the Regulation on 5118, which is Attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism. The most important changes are really in the regulation. We are, if you flip to the last page, you can see what's marked in red and I will read that part. So attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism. We are changing just a little bit to make us have some more ability to give kids back credit if they wound up having some missed classes. So we're going to have it read, "The second cut for the semester in the same class may result in a loss of credit rather than will result in a loss of credit. The parent or guardian will be notified of the potential loss of credit and a plan to restore the student's good credit may be made." So it's not a guarantee that we will be allowing the student to regain credit, but it's allowing us as a policy to offer retribution for students who have perhaps just gone astray a little bit and want to make good on absenteeism. And that is really the crux of the change that we're making.
Okay.
So take a look through that. This is just read-only for tonight.
Excellent.
Same thing with the policy, that's really not changing, just the regulation is. And the next item is Policy 6409. This is not new information to the Board of Education. This, these changes are keeping up with regulations from the State Board of Education regarding primarily age. As we know, we are now going to keep students eligible for special education services through the end of the school year during which the students turn 22. So this is an extension of what we as a district need to offer for special education students. So take a look through this one as well. Again, it's not really new information, it's just finally formalized to keep us in standards with the State Board.
And, which I think you're suggesting, we are doing this already in Guilford Public Schools, we are simply making sure our policy reflects this updated.
Yep, this was effective as of July of this past year.
Excellent, okay. Wonderful. All right, so again, these are receive items. If anyone has questions about them, I imagine they can reach out.
They sure can.
Wonderful. And then they will be act-on items at our meeting at the beginning of April. Okay, we are up to 9.7 on the agenda, which is to discuss a Board of Education vacancy. I am sad to share that one of our colleagues, Noel Petra, has given us his resignation. Noel has been a wonderful, wonderful colleague on the, on the Board of Education and has given two-plus years of, of service that has been extraordinarily valuable. He is a very, very busy person and, and has shared that he is going to need to step down from the Board of Education. There is a process per Board of Ed policy and per the Guilford Town Charter, in which the Board of Education needs to appoint someone to fill this vacancy until the next municipal election, which will be November 2025. Per state statute, and this is reflected in the Guilford Town Charter, we are expected to fill the position, if practicable, that's in quotes, with someone from the same political party. And so I have every expectation and we are committed to appointing someone to fill the position vacated by Mr. Petra, by someone who is a registered independent in alignment with that expectation. We will be putting out then an invitation for submission of a letter of interest and resume for anyone who is currently a registered independent, who might be interested in giving their time, energy, and commitment to participation on this board. We have, per Town Charter, 60 days to fill this position. Mr. Petra's resignation was effective as of February 29th. So we will move forward in order to fill that position within 60 days. We will, as I said, put out an announcement so that folks are aware that we are accepting letters of interest and resumes. We will then, as a board, meet to go through those, invite some folks to come in for an interview. We have done this several times before, when our colleague Christine Cohen was elected to the State Senate. She did step down and also colleague Vin Baglio, who was a Republican colleague, did so as well. So we have done this for a Republican colleague, for a Democratic colleague, and now we'll be doing it for an independent colleague. If anyone has any questions in the meantime, they should feel free to reach out to me. My email address is on the Guilford Public Schools website, ballastrack@gilfordschools.org. But again, I just, I really want to express my, my deep gratitude to Noel for, for being a really wonderful colleague and, and for his commitment to Guilford Public Schools over the last two-plus years.
One more question.
All right. 9.8, we added this at the beginning of the meeting, is to act on a budget reduction from the Board of Finance. So as part of our budget process, this Board of Ed forwarded a proposed budget for the 2024-2025 year to the Board of Finance. Dr. Freeman and I presented that budget on February 15th to the Board of Finance and then that board held a public forum last Tuesday and then started deliberations and actually voted last Thursday on both the Board of Education and Board of Selectment Town budgets. At that meeting, the Board of Finance determined that they would reduce the Board of Education budget by an additional $200,000. I will remind the community that the budget that we, the Board of Education, had put forth to the Board of Finance reflected a $261,000 reduction that we took following deliberations, several public hearings, and consideration for the, for the thoughtful budget that had been brought to us by Dr. Freeman and the administration. So again, this board reduced that budget by 261,000 and we are being asked to reduce it, not asked, we're being told, told, to reduce it by another $200,000. I will simply say, as someone who is in attendance at those meetings, the Board of Finance, I think, is very carefully trying to balance these budgets with what they put for to the taxpayer. So they're trying to balance, making sure that we're providing quality educational services and quality town services to members of our community and recognizing that it is the community that financially supports those efforts. So again, we have now to think about a reduction. We have, we did learn, and I'm going to turn to, to Dr. Freeman here, there, there may be an opportunity to consider one way to make this reduction, because we have learned that our medical line, which is one of the, the budgets, our medical benefit line, may be a place where that reduction can, can happen. We do craft these budgets early on in, in the year prior to the year in which they are operationalized. And a lot of times, we don't have all the information or final information, or information can change about some of those budget lines, and the medical line is one. As an example, in our budget cuts that this board took on February 5th, we in fact accommodated a change in the pension line and reduced the budget by $21,000 at that time because we got additional information. And so I'm going to turn to Dr. Freeman now, because he shared with us in the Operations Committee meeting that we may be in a similar situation with the medical line.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Dr. Ballastrace, thank you. I, I would just note that in the last two budget seasons, medical increases were in fact the driving factor behind those budget designs and those drove our decisions and ultimately impacted the bottom line. As a result of that experience over the last two years, the town and the school budget office is collaboratively, working with our insurance consultant, put our medical insurance out to bid. We believe that the, the pressure of putting it out to bid has resulted in some beneficial responses and as you noted, our budget process begins so early that that information continues to come in. We met with our insurance consultant last week collaboratively with the town and the fact is that we have good news to share tonight. It does appear that our medical costs are going to be below the number that we had built into the budget. We're still finalizing those numbers, but we are confident tonight saying to you that we can and should absorb that $200,000 reduction by reducing the medical benefits line in this budget by $200,000. I know that this board deliberated long and hard about how to recognize a $261,000 reduction. I am pleased that I am able to sit here tonight and recommend that this reduction can be absorbed in the medical line and does not require us to look in other places at this time. And I really appreciate the continued hard work of our insurance consultant as well as Mr. Trudeau and our business office and the town business office. We work collaboratively on medical benefits for employees with the town, so this is good news and it's a testament to everybody really working on this.
Excellent.
Wonderful news.
That's great.
Thank you.
Just so we clarify, by medical benefits, we're saying the, the cost to us for the insurance is going down, not that we're going to decrease the benefits to our employees.
That is an, that's a very important clarification.
That is exactly right. Yes, it doesn't change the medical package that any one of our employees has, it's just the increase this year is less than we had expected.
Okay. So I imagine several of us, following the Board of Finance meeting, had spent some time thinking about where that additional $200,000 might come from. But given the fact that the medical expense benefit line, however you want to say that, per, per my colleague Dr. Hirsch's comment, is in fact going to go down, that is, that is the place that, 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 that should come unless anyone else has other thoughts or.
No, that sounds pretty.
No, it makes sense.
Okay.
With the warning that it may go up next year.
Well, that's, yeah.
Yes, it's an annual contract, yes.
That's right.
Don't wreck our good mood.
All right, we do need to officially vote on an updated Board of Education budget that will then go back to the town in preparation for both the town meeting and the town referendum.
Okay, so the motion is on the total budget, not the reduction?
The motion, the motion is, is as follows and Mrs. Trudeau or Dr. Freeman can correct me on this, wait, I have to make sure I have my updated, updated numbers. Sorry, I have several. Mrs. Trudeau, could you just make sure that I'm looking at the most recent thing?
Yeah, I have it open in front of me as well.
I have, so the budget that was put forth to the Board of Finance from the Board of Ed was in the amount of $72,157,151. The motion tonight would be, in response to the reduction taken by the Board of Finance, this Board of Ed would reduce by 200,000 the medical line in the budget to update the total budget to be, I want to make sure I do this right, $71,957,151.
That's correct.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is a unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Trudeau, do you need anything more from us in terms of forwarding that then to the Town?
No.
No?
No, absolutely.
I will also report out that the Board of Finance did vote on and accepted our bonding proposal for the Board of Ed, so that is expected to be put out as part of the referendum as well.
So we began with a 5.36% increase, and we've now ended up at a 4....
7.9.
Yeah, we started at a 5.46.
4.6.
Brought that down to a 5.08 in your reductions, and now ended at 4.79, correct?
Yep. All right. Okay, thank you, that's important. We are now up to reports, I just lost my agenda, you guys. Thank you, committee reports.
0.1, policy.
Thank you. Policy Committee, do you have anything else to share with us?
Just a couple of noteworthy items from our last meeting. We received tonight a couple of changes that we are comfortable moving forward to the main board. Other things that we've been discussing, just to keep the community aware in case people want to give us feedback, we've discussed dress code, we've discussed cell phone usage. So that is something that the Policy Committee has been discussing at length with our administrators. We haven't found anything in addition to our existing policies that we want to update. So so far, we're comfortable with where those policies remain, but I just wanted to let people know that we are in fact talking about them. And then the last thing that we probably will eventually make some changes in and bring forward to the full board is the selection of educational materials, which is any questions about materials or books and the process by which parents can exempt students from reading certain materials. So expect to see something along those lines over the next few months.
And in fact, it's worth noting that the legislature is looking at a possible legislative change, and so I think our timing, we shouldn't rush something forward until we hold off and see if Hartford is going to move in any direction. I think that we want to pay it, so I think our timing is fortunate on this one.
Excellent. Operations Committee, anything more to share from...
No, nothing that we have in common.
All right. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee?
We're meeting on the 25th of March. We'll be discussing the new math curriculum that has been installed, and we'll be talking about the progress being made to meet the state requirements on health and wellness.
Excellent. Wonderful. And that meeting will be happening here, correct?
At Baldwin.
At Baldwin.
At 6 o'clock.
It's probably right here.
Yes.
All right, excellent.
Probably just prior to your teacher roundtable meeting.
Right, exactly, right. Okay. Liaisons to Town Committees, anything to report out?
Nothing.
Board of Ed related? No? And then no liaison to Learn Board of Directors. We are now at item number 11. Open to public comments from anyone who would like to address the board at this time. Doesn't have to be on the agenda, come on up. We ask that you, each to three minutes, and just give us your name and address if you would.
Shall I?
Sure.
I'll give you a little hand raise when you get close to three minutes.
Okay. My name's Alex Heatherington, I live at 150 Boston Street in Guilford. I attended last month's meeting and heard with great interest the Guilford D A Y report on the seriousness of the mental health challenges facing our youth, and also heard Dr. Freeman discuss the commendable and significant financial investments that the district is making to address those. But I think one thing that we did not discuss there was that we are actively undermining those efforts, unintentionally, but still undermining and making the crisis worse by forcing a wake-up time for our adolescents that is one hour earlier than the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics recommends, and thereby contributing to the inadequate sleep among our teenagers, and the association between that lack of sleep and depression and other mental health issues has been extensively documented. And this is a choice that we, as a community, make every year when we decide to start school earlier than the experts have pretty much unanimously recommended that we do. And that's experts like the CDC, the Surgeon General, the American Medical Association, the Connecticut State Board of Education, the National PTA, the National Education Association, and many more. There is a clear consensus on what is best for our children, and not out of neglect, but we are ignoring that consensus. I should have started by saying I know this job is not easy, and I appreciate all of your efforts, so I definitely am not here to criticize those efforts, but more to encourage us to work together with urgency to get this right going forward, and given the severity of the mental health challenges that we heard about in this room last month, some of our, I don't say this to be dramatic, but some of our children's lives may be at stake. We must not let inertia and the power of the status quo be the deciding factor on this issue. I'm also well aware that the school start time topic came before the board previously, and at that time, the task force that studied it on behalf of the board concluded that we should, quote, "strive to achieve a Guilford High School start time of not earlier than 7:55 a.m. by the fall of 2019." And obviously, COVID interrupted and understandably distracted our efforts, but it's now five years later. I think the science on school start times is even clearer, the mental health crisis is even worse, and now is the time to take on this challenge. And by doing the hard work to change something that is within this room's control, you can materially improve student mental health, not to mention many other commendable outcomes, like the learning outcomes, if we prioritize eliminating unhealthy start times in Guilford.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I went over.
How long, you mentioned five years, right? Five years ago, I'm trying to remember when we made the...
No, the start time task force's work was probably in the school year 16, 17, if not 17, 18.
My time. Yes. Oh. I came on, and I voted. We voted, I was part of the vote for the 15 minutes of the high school, but the recommendation was 7:55.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just anecdotally, I talked to Alex offline about this, and there are a few districts in our New York communities who have been, like Old Saybrook has been able to get to 8 a.m. But, you know, the bigger struggle, as we know on a state level, is until we can align with the other schools that we participate in activities with, like sports and other extracurriculars or magnets, that's the piece that's going to be always the hardest. I don't think anyone argues the science around it, but that there is this greater... Like, if everyone in Connecticut went to this later start time, it would alleviate a lot of challenges, but that's not a reason, there's a lot of districts that have independently done it and done it successfully. So I mean, it's a conversation we need to resurrect.
We can do it regional, I mean, is it possible to do it on the shoreline?
Well, we can certainly make this an agenda in the future.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make this an agenda item and have a conversation.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening in public comment? All right, hearing none. We did, again, add an executive session, so I am in a moment going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. When the board comes out of executive session, we will be adjourning this meeting, we will not be taking any votes, we will not be having any discussion, we will simply be voting to end the meeting. So I'm now going to ask for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.